Well, thank you both for coming, and I do mean both. Um, so as I said before we started recording, we're we're here basically to listen about feedback for Article twelve, which was the new elementary school. Uh, get feedback from the community. Basically, you know what you felt about it, ideas you might have, um. And then there will be a survey going out. Uh, by the end of the week, it's going to be going out through, from what I understand, all different social media outlets. Um, that we are posting in the library. And I think this morning they also discussed potentially putting something at the transfer station. Uh, where people could fill something out there, but there's going to be some coordination associated with that. Um, so basically, the floor belongs to the two of you, and we're just mainly here to, um, listen and take notes.
Okay, well, I have a double interest. One, I have a daughter who works in this school. And I live next to Clark School. So the future of Clark School, with no school, you know, construction going on for the foreseeable future, well, you know, im- imminent future, I should say. Um, I'm not concerned. I am concerned for the future resale value of my house. Lived there forty-five years, seen many a change. Multiple classrooms come and go. Um, all sorts of changes in the school, you know, what grades are there, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, that's my, I would say, my prime concern. Um, secondary concern, twofold, one, we also own a derpage and property on the boothed. With a new school, our taxes would be probably drive us out of town. And I think that's what a lot of people were concerned about. Is the tax impact. So I think when it's presented again, and I know it was, I think, with the median, um, priced house, I think there was some estimation. But for the simple folk like me who are not so good at the math, you know, going three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, six hundred thousand to have a chart to show people.
Sure.
Short term, long term, what the tax implications would be. Um, but for the safety of everybody in this school, from the youngest child to, you know, the senior staff members, I think it's imperative to do something with the school.
The school feedback.
It sure is.
Having somebody who works here, I do, you know, I'm familiar with some of the issues, certainly not all of them. I did come for the walkthrough.
Sure.
Um, you know, I do what I can to make myself educated as to what the issues are. Read what I can and and look at the school and know what the problems are. So those are my concerns.
No, we appreciate it.
Where, where do you live in your college?
Immediately on the left, when you're looking at the school.
On Davis Lane or?
No.
I grew up on Davis Lane, that's why.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I live in on Woodmore Lane, which is over.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I grew up in the red and white house across the street from the tennis courts.
Oh, great.
So I'm familiar with the area. I guess me personally, my question would be, so I, again, my concerns would be, I have two daughters, one's gonna be five, and one is one. So coming into the, into the school, um. So selfishly for me and my wife, we would like a new school to be built. We think that it definitely is something that needs to happen. Um, the article last, two years ago, was defeated very heavily. And then it scales down version, almost the same results. So where do we? Where does like the school board see it going and presenting something that could potentially be powd- uh, powdable to the citizens of Amherst? Cause it didn't seem like even a scaled down version didn't really gain any traction. And to scale down even further, does it even accomplish the goals? You know, scale down, get a pass, is it accomplishing the goals, or is it just doing something to do it?
Well, and and that's what we don't want to do, I think. And I don't want to speak for the board. Um, and by the way, I'm Tom Gothier, I'm the chair, and this is Jason White, he's the vice chair, we didn't do introduction, so I know you're Marty.
No, Marty lives behind me on Carriage.
Oh, excuse me.
I live on Foundry, I'm Sally Hooper, very good friend of Marty.
I, 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 I always get that confused. Uh, I, I lived across the street from your daughter and son-in-law. Live across the street, I should, I say live now, because they no longer live there, so.
Oh, on Beaver Brook.
On Beaver Brook, yeah, we're the red house right across, so.
Traitors, they moved out of town.
I won't, I won't tell her that you said you were concerned about your house value, because I, I know she would be, she'd take offense to that, not being able to get full value for it, so.
Um, that's not my goal. My goal is.
No, I'm just kidding. Sure.
Literally, because if there's a stigma, what's going in next door? Because there've been proposals, but obviously it's so far down the road, nobody's concentrating on that, they're concentrating on this, which rightly so. But that also is my concern.
Yeah, and then it's a fair concern, so I'm sorry, what was your name?
Caleb.
Caleb, thank you. So we, and again, not to speak for the board, we this is why we're doing this now, because it was voted, we had forty-two percent of the vote this year, so it went up four percent, but uh, with more votes, we had more votes this year than last year, but still a long way from the sixty percent to get there, so that was kind of our barometer is where we ended up to determine what the next steps were. We got to fifty percent. You know, that, that's a different question. If we get less than we had, or about the same as last year, we probably needed to find a different tack. And if we got to fifty-nine percent, well, then we're pretty close, we, we can probably go forward, but we have, so that's why we're doing things like this. We did two of them today. We're going to be meeting with the, um, South Heagan and Mont Vernon School Boards, having one large meeting focused just on facilities, and I'm totally drawing a blank on the date, I believe it's later this month. Um, but with the intent of just breaking down the, the different options district-wide, because we know that a new elementary school is, is not palatable at this point, um, for, for taxpayers, at least not with the cost this year with insurance, uh, interest rates compared to what they were last year. Fifty million dollar bond last year might have been a little bit different. We went from an eighty-three million dollar project to about ninety-eight million all in. This year it was fifty-four, fifty-two, fifty-four, and it was gonna be like a hundred million when you did all the interest on, on everything, so quite a different market that we're in. So I think we're gonna, you know, we'll have that meeting with the entire seventeen-member SAU Cooperative School Board. Um, and really just break down what all the options are, because Mont Vernon plays into this with what they might do with their students. They're looking at, they, they passed a article in their, uh, voting this year to look at what they want to do for their seventh and eighth graders. Do they keep them in district? Do they build something? Do they wait and see what we do? Um, so there are plenty of options, but we don't have a real plan, because we want to get feedback and, and look at more options now.
Sure. And if Mont Vernon kind of splits off and does their own thing, does that make getting the school pass easier or more difficult in your opinion? What is that?
It means, so we're, we're dealing with two things in the Amherst School District. We're dealing with space issues and we're dealing with quality of building issues. And that includes what Sally mentioned with some of the safety items too. We have portables in the back that are, you know, essentially just sitting outside of the school system, so. Um, not a great option in, in this day and age, at least it's highlighted right, you know, right now, so what do we do to alleviate that? What do we do to solve the space issues in this building? And then what do we do to solve buildings that are sixty, fifty-five and sixty years old? Like, if you go to AMS, pretty much every ceiling tile has some sort of stain on it from a leaky roof. You know, we're doing a lot of projects there. We have about a fourteen million dollar roof project we're doing right now. But that's only scratching the surface on the work that needs to get done. So we have facilities that are old that need a lot of work. We're gonna have HVAC issues here, there'll be ten to fifteen million, uh, in, you know, in the next five to ten years. So we're gonna spend money somewhere, just a matter of where we do it and how we solve those two issues at the same time.
And I, I went to AMS, and I'm thirty-eight, and it was a piece of crap when I was there, so.
Yeah, yeah, nineteen, was it six, seventy-two, seventy-two was, uh, sixty-seven was this building and seventy-two was, uh, AMS.
Okay.
Give, give or take a year on either side, but so, I mean, they're old, they're fifty-plus year buildings and buildings that typically have a fifty-year lifespan. Now, you take care of them, they can, they can be saved and, and pushed on. My wife's high school, she reminds me often, in New York City is a hundred and ten years old, and it's immaculate compared to what we have. But I think construction a hundred and ten years ago is different than what it was in the sixties and seventies and eighties in terms of style, quality, design, et cetera.
I think another concern too, from a lot of people I talk to my age, um, and my age is not typically the one who will join a Zoom, go to the meetings, unless they have a more of a personal vested interest, as I do. Um, and getting the word out to them is important, because they don't want their taxes to go up. Um, they'd like to stay in town as long as they can, so as far as I know, it's a cop launch no from seniors.
Um, and is there any perception that improved schools will increase the value of their property, or that investing in children is investing in our future? Is there any certain long-term?
I see that, because I used to be a Realtor, so I know how properties maintain or increase their value.
Right.
And decrease. If we have schools that nobody wants to come to, your property value is good, is certainly going to go down. I have heard too that a reason, uh, maybe I won't talk about that. No, no, mind it.
Well, I mean, I think from my perspective also, I'm trying to figure out whether the fact that it didn't pass is partly because people don't want it to pass, or also a communications breakdown in terms of enough people understanding the gravity of the conditions that the schools are in. And also understanding the, the, the give and take of what the community stands to benefit by making such an investment, and I just you know, the fact that there are only literally four of us here is like appalling to me. I, I don't understand what's going on. Like, when I talked to Steve, the superintendent, who's like, the air quality in the buildings is lower than what any company, private company would send their employees to work in. There, there's, you know, it's not safe for kids to be learning in, in mobile home buildings, nor to have like flood thrown and, um, fire issues, uh, you know, so what, what's? And, you know, Parker and I were talking about this, like, is it the project was just too vast and you need to scale it down? And will the school board and the superintendent do some sort of survey to gauge whether the community is ready to do something that's like more feasible? But something has to change. So I guess my question to you all, and I'm sorry that I came in late, is like, what's what can be done to like meaningfully move this forward, rather than just like having more years pass?
Yeah, and I think this is, as I mentioned, to Caleb right before you came in, uh, and it's clear, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so right before he came in, this is kind of the first step of that. We're gonna meet with the SAU, um, South Heagan and Mont Vernon Boards. And really just have a lengthy discussion. There are a couple of members in the South Heagan Board that are pushing for us to move seventh and eighth grade into AMS. Um, has its pros and has its cons. Um, you know, you do that, then you start to, if you watched our SAU meeting from right before the break, I want to say the twenty nineteenth, whatever that Tuesday was before the break, we talked about this in brief, because we're gonna have a lengthier meeting on it, where it's just facilities, but you're talking about all right, you have seventh and eighth grade move to the annex, you move everybody inside the high school, you're shrinking the capacity and offerings for high school, so you need to build additional space there. The annex now becomes, is that a fourth ASD building, or does that get folded into South Heagan Cooperative? So there are a lot of questions on that, but this is why we're gonna have a conversation with the South Heagan Board and the Mont Vernon Board, and really look at every different option. We've done a lot of this work, not all of them have been involved in it. Um, I think there were some trust issues and some communication issues with certain um, folks on those boards that didn't trust that the job was done to their liking, even though the job was done and that research was done, so they um, brought up issues that certainly did not promote what we were trying to do. So now we're gonna have those conversations and revisit some of the stuff that has been done and, and just bring it up again and say, hey, five years ago, these are the reasons why we didn't consolidate, or these are the reasons why we didn't do A, B, or C. So it's gonna be essentially be restarting the process. So we're probably a couple of years down the road from any sort of construction, but at least a year, I would think, before we have any sort of plan to be able to put on a ballot and, and go, go forth with. If I'm being honest.
Do, do you guys have any opinion on what's your level of, um, I guess, understanding or concern that may be a lack of understanding on the actual implications led to people being resistant to this? Like, people don't know that, like you mentioned, the, the roof project, there's stuff that's gonna have to be done, and it's gonna be done anyways, and then that's almost being treated as a separate issue. Then they, they have this bond issue and ways and means, in my opinion, presented a very, uh, untrue portrayal of, of kind of what the, the tax implications would be, because they have like a calculator. And if you put in, my house is gonna be worth two hundred thousand dollars in two years, my property taxes are gonna go X amount, but that's only true if the whole town doesn't go up in property value, only your property, so.
And I think short term, I think that, oh, there's no doubt. There's, there's no doubt it did, and, and you know, we combat that as best we can, but there's only so much as a board that we can do. We don't have an active Facebook page, we don't have the ability for one member to go on there and just start rifling off comments and um, frankly, what does it get you in the end? I mean, you can go on there and spend all day on Facebook if you needed to, and you're just arguing back and forth. People are gonna believe what they're gonna believe, and people are gonna vote how they're gonna vote. You're not gonna, you're gonna sway very few people. So we did I have to go back and count, but I would say probably fifty sessions in the last year, being out in the community, trying to talk to people, going into people's homes. Um, having, you know, one-on-one meetings, having meetings like this, and I think our best attended one maybe had ten people in it. So it's, um.
The apathy is.
Part of it's the communication. We're, you know, we're limited, there's no paper in this town, there's no radio station, you know, M U R is not gonna carry our stuff. So, you know, we are limited to social media, we're limited to word of mouth, we're, you know, we get great feedback from parents who are on the NICSOL list, but if you're retired in this community, are you gonna be on the NICSOL list to just stay involved in the schools? It's out of sight, it's out of mind, because you're not involved in that. Your only your only contribution to the schools or involvement is taxes essentially, so.
From the mail, mailboxes actually seem to work pretty well based off of the, uh.
And I think that's, but that stuff costs money, and so we, we've been limited, because we had a hundred and fifty thousand a couple of years ago that we put in the budget. And that was only because the year before that, we tried to get two hundred and fifty thousand voted in at separate war and article, and it was voted down. So if we couldn't even do the, the proper studies that we wanted to, so we faced that uphill battle trying to do this as cost efficiently as possible, and spending three, four grand to do a mailer is, is not cheap, you know, it's.
Can you have a fundraiser? Like, can the PTA do a fundraiser?
And that's, and that's what we have to try to, try to do. We, we try to, we didn't try to avoid that. We, we didn't do that this year. We tried to do more of that one-on-one stuff, but at some point, we're gonna have to do, um, a mailer of some sort. So we're, you know, we're working on that now and trying to figure out that plan for whatever we're gonna do. We know that we have to get something in, in people's mailboxes.
You guys anticipate that this is gonna be like a, you're starting with square ones, like you're blown away.
I don't think we're, we're not blowing away all that work, but we're just bringing it to the forefront again to people that say, this isn't done, and it's basically breaking it down and saying, all right, here's this, and, and here's this. Ways and Means, big thing was, we had a plan that we presented this year. Their, their big thing was that we didn't have these plans drawn up for three or four different options, one hundred percent true. But based off the funds that we had and the original company we worked with, they gave us estimates, said, this is new, this is fixing everything and doing an addition. This is just fixing everything as you go along, and options, those first two options were pretty similar. So let's build new, let's not gut the whole building and renovate it, um, and spend five million dollars less than we would for a new building. Let's get it, let's do it the right way. And then we went out and got those plans based off that option, so.
Did you guys ever explore the option of like private for public building type of funding, just out of curiosity?
We explored everything. I don't know specifically what you're, what you mean by that, but we, we, we explored every option available for us in terms of state funding, in terms of federal funding. We, we looked at every possible aspect. Did we go out and look for somebody's rich aunt to croak and write us into the will? We didn't do that, but you know, if somebody.
There are schools that have funded with private, a private company will build it and make it basically key, turn it and then lease from the company.
Yeah, we did not, we did not look at that.
I'm serious.
Nope, but that's. I, I don't, I've never seen that as an option, so, but it's.
It's varying success on whether people like it or not, but it's something that it has been done at some schools I've worked on.
Yeah, I think the, um, so I've got three kids, uh, four and a half year olds.
What was your name again? I'm sorry.
Parker.
Parker, thanks.
And, uh, and two seven-month-old girls, so certainly a vested interest in, in having good schools that are, are safe. Um, to me, there were a few takeaways that I, I felt like from the vote, and also just feedback I've been getting from the community, so, um, yeah. The veracity of people sharing this feedback, you know, this isn't bad as, like, it's more just of what's out there and concerns that people have, but I think are outside of, of what is typically talked about, which is just the tax burden. Um, and to that, the where I talk to people, I, I kind of know who are the people who are gonna say no to any amount of spending, and I think it's okay to have thirty-five kids in the classroom. I also know the people who are gonna say yes, and when I listen to the arguments, uh, you know, the folks who are saying we need a new school, I have, my wife and I are broadly in favor, just simply say we need a new school. But it's not necessarily that this is a good plan. It's that we need a new school, and this has given us a new school. I feel like there are a lot of people who's opinion of that I respect, who say we need a new school, but and some of those butts were that building a two-story school and a lot that can't really fit. You know, this well is exceedingly expensive, as opposed to building a one-story school. Thank those, someone who, who used to be, uh, select member of the planning board in the southern part of town, or the utilities. And their point of view is you could build a school for half the cost and overpay for the land. Um, and, and that would be a much less expensive option, uh, from a few people who are of that mindset, they seem to think that this was a vanity project of a former superintendent. And have a very negative view of it, that he was trying to push something through that the town didn't want, and that um, this continues to come up when there would be better options for like a one-story school in the southern part of town. So that's something I've, I've heard of folks who generally know something about the town. I've also heard from folks who I would have expected to be sort of de facto supporters of newer, better schools. They don't like the combination of the preschool and elementary school. Um, and there were some concerns about that. Um, personally, I get a little nervous, my house was right behind the school, so when people are talking asbestos and all this other stuff, I go, gee, the prevailing wind is out.
It is sealed off. The, the asbestos is all sealed. I mean, that's, that part is the main thing, but it's still in the building.
Until you start demoing it.
Correct, yeah.
And that, that's the demo part is what I'm worried about. I'm not worried about this as long as it stands. Um, and so those were some of the things that were, were coming up in the community that I felt were, were, um, this middle group, right, that, that needs to be won over and, and could put over. I also read the vote as, as fairly interesting, that every other school funding piece, even the, the, um, the contract, which was quite expensive as a tax increase, passed.
Our budget did not pass. Just the contracts did.
The contracts passed, and there were a couple, I think there were a couple of those, I think, maybe, but. Um, but to me, that, that contract speaks, that's a big tax increase. That, to me, in some ways was reflective of you, there are a lot of people who care enough about the school, who said, we want good teachers, that they're willing to vote for that. They're splitting their vote, but turned down the plan. And that, to me, was very different than the town I grew up in, where everything in the school failed, right? It wasn't, it wasn't just one thing, it was, everything failed until the, whatever was failed, and then the town would vote it in. And so to me, that was an interesting message of like, okay, the town still does care about education, they still care that their schools are doing well. There's a lot of parents and younger families moving in with kids who came here for the schools. But there's something about this plan that's turning people off in a way, and I'm not convinced it was purely about the scale. I think scale is, is a piece of it. Um, but like I said, those other things I mentioned were some of the, the feedback I heard, for people I would expect would be easy converts to be yes. Um, and then on the more conservative side, I think there were some uh, concerns about unions limiting, like middle school or something, but I don't know how I don't, I don't know how that works, but that was something that came up. I don't think that person was here, I don't think that person would ever went into the, in that way, but, um. I do think that was one thing, uh, that uh, maybe some awareness too, of, uh, I think after pandemic, teachers' unions aren't particularly well-loved. And the signs for the new school, the SOS signs fell right into the stigma that students are last, when it said staff, schools, students. And I was like, really? Like, no one said maybe put students first, because that's what gets people to vote. So I do think there's another aspect here at play, which is a view that this is driven by teachers and a school board who always want to spend more money. It's a vanity project of steals. And not actually and, and the students are the third piece, right? They would benefit from this school, but it's, it's far behind, and so those are some of the things I felt like I didn't get. Great answers too, and I, and I should have been more proactive in attending some of the meetings and things like that, but, uh, those were some of the topics I didn't feel like were addressed in the letter, and the citizen and things like that, that, that were real sticking points for folks as to you know, why a two-story school right next to a wet one? Um.
Yeah, good to hear that. We appreciate it.
Yeah. Except is it not less expensive to build a two, a two-story, the same square footage as all one-story? I know certainly in residential, it, it's a lot more expensive to build a ranch, and it is a colonial.
Uh, I mean, this is a little beyond my expertise, but my understanding is that once you start getting to public buildings on two stories with all the ADA requirements and anything else, that the cost chain to, to really jump. But.
Right, yeah, you put in an elevator or whatever.
Right, and, and like lifts and everything else, so. Um, but again, this is beyond my expertise.
I, I don't feel qualified to.
We have to discuss you know, all sides of, of.
And the person who did say that to me, again, is it bull crap? I don't know, but he did have more of a background in it than I did in construction, buildings, and had done some.
Talk to him again, tell him to come talk to us, because that was, that's never been brought up, and in two years of doing this now, we've had proposals going, never brought up one story. People say, don't build it in the village, and my pushback on that is, all right, you give me ten acres somewhere in this town that's ready to go plumbing, electric, you know, it's site-ready basically. And tell me that we can. Yeah, exactly, and it's accessible. So, uh, where that land is in this town, I have no idea. So that was always my big thing they were, why are you building in the village? Well, we have a school there already, and we can make the site, you know, the site's ready to go, we have plumbing here, we can, you know, we have septic, we have sewer, so that was always my beef with that, was that they wanted us to build this in this magical piece of land that just doesn't exist in this town.
Not, uh, I'll, I'll.
But, but haven't talked to us, haven't reached out, because I'd love to find out more about that, I mean.
Because he was, he was picked apparently a number of years ago, there was a piece of land in this other part of town where the utilities come through that the town could have bought, and I think it was the beginning of, he hated I don't, I don't know the former superintendent, this guy.
Not a fan.
Adam.
Felt like he made some.
Adam or Peter? So is it Adam or Peter that he's? Okay, yeah.
And he basically said that there were big mistakes not purchasing land that was available, that could have done the project far cheaper. Um, at the time, and that this became that he was the one that said.
Since I have been on the board, we've not talked, there's not been land available, but doesn't, it wasn't there before I was on, but.
Yeah, and this, and this crew I was talking to has been in town for a long time. Um, and so I can certainly reach out, but that was interesting thing that got me thinking like, oh, could, could you offer someone twice the value of their land, and if it really is half the cost to build a one-story, then the town comes out right on top. But I, again, this is.
Yeah, we'd love to hear more. Have, have him reach out to us.
I don't think you totally go to, I'll try and reach out.
Yes.
But this was just some of the feedback that I've heard.
Just great feedback.
Swirling.
Was there, there's you mentioned another aspect of, I guess it was part of the budget that didn't pass that had to do with funding for literacy programs?
So our budget didn't pass, and so with that, we had a library assistant, a reading specialist for Amherst Middle School, and then two fellows that we would have partnered with St. Anson College on. It was two teachers that are qualified teachers going for special ed certifications, and essentially would have had two full-time, uh, for lack of a better word, interns. Uh, they're, they're fellows, it's
Yeah.
A step up from interns that would have worked just with, um, special education needs on math and reading. So kids that are lagging behind, kids that are on I E Ps, that would have worked, they would have worked with them um, for fifty grand total. I mean, two teachers for fifty grand is, I mean, one teacher is forty-five thousand base salary now, so. Um, but because the budget failed, we don't have the option of, um, it's not in the budget right now as we get ready for next year.
And is the community, I mean, he also mentioned like the fourth grade reading level, what they're graduating with, this sort of subpar, the numbers are not great, like.
Fifth grade, fourth grade.
Is that, has that been communicated? Because I think there's a must.
As best we can.
Like this disconnect, people move to Amherst and think like, part of the reason they're moving here is for really great schools and great education, and I think people are not up, they're not being accurately updated in terms of the reality and like, you know, the physical reality of the building is one thing, but to actually realize that the, that the levels are subpar is like really concerning.
So, so people have an awareness of this, because our test scores have been below where we want them to be.
I think it's such an excuse of like, well, A, the pandemic impacted that, which I get.
Come up with an excuse for everything in life, right? But the bottom line is that these are the test scores, and these are what our metrics are.
Yeah.
So that's why we're working on two things. We're working on trying to fix that, which is what some of those reading specialists would do. But Ways and Means brought up that you can't just keep throwing money at things to fix things, which they're a hundred percent right. You have to sometimes work with what you have to be able to improve things like that. Um, and find areas in the budget where you might have waste. I don't think our budget has a lot of waste in it, it doesn't have a lot of extra. But this is that budget, part of the budget conversation is, is a, is a, you know, four-hour conversation on another day, because we can really get into that, but way in Ways and Means was highlighting the test scores, so people realize that the test scores are low, and they're using that to say, we keep giving you more money, but test scores aren't improving. You know, we're, we're done, we're cutting off the spigot, so to speak. There was that mentality with Ways and Means, so test scores, the, it's not unknown, um, but it's a matter of how you solve that.
And I saw the school Ways and Means was unanimously, unanimously against the plan. What was their point of view? Why did they come out? So, I mean, I generally know why Ways and Means committees exist, but I thought that was a striking number, I was curious.
It was, it was two, for the budget or for the building need?
For the building.
For the building, it was too much money, it was, uh, one of them would have been, one of them, they, they recognized the need. For the building, it was too much money. It was, uh, one of them would have been, one of them, they they recognized the need, but they thought that there should have been other options presented. To the town to have the town pick which option, um, even though we worked with that, the JFA committee for the last three or four years and. You know, limited somewhat in funding to get real. Hard plans drawn to the level that we even had, which is not a full schematic by any means, but even to get those needed a lot more money than we had. So. That's one of the things we'll look at as we go forward. All right, what do we have to do to, you know, to fix this building? Um, you know, spend thirty million dollars to get it ready to do the same thing in AMS and and, you know, say, hey, this is what it's going to cost to do this. This is what it's cost for. Cost for new and have those up-to-date figures on it. So those are the types of things that we have to look at going forward.
I think that. There were a long piece, I think Victoria Parisi wrote. But I thought, I I thought it was helpful. But I also read it. Like propaganda, like this is, I know where this is.
You read it from your viewpoint, right?
Well, I read it from the perspective that. She was coming in with a very clear agenda. And had a a clear view on the value. I mean, I tend to agree, but. If I put. Myself certain as well as she was, it's, it's like reading. A memo by Kevin McCarthy or Hakeem Jeffries. It's like, I know you're coming with a mangle. You've got something to prove. And do I trust everything you're saying? No. Because you can, it's not that you aren't lying. But that there's a power of omission. And I do think that. If there were ways to find allies in town. Select men or if there was someone on the ways and means committee that could be swayed. To write that kind of memo. You win. More people who were leaning no and needed only a push to yes than. Coming from the school board. I know that's. I assume that's hard to hear, but like.
No, and we recognize that and we. We can take it.
And it wasn't, you know, I thought it was well written. It was just, I think that. I think there was a thing two years ago that was put in more than showing the plans and then there was someone who. Who expressed to me and my wife that she didn't like it because it sort of. Showed something as if it was ready to go or something. I can't remember the exact. Quote, but just thinking about who are allies in town. That could be won over or there are multiple options or whatever it is, I think. It just feels like coming from the school board. If I read the, if I read the citizen, it's like the school board versus someone who doesn't want it. It's like. I have a hard time reconciling this because. Both of you have an agenda. And. I'm not sure, you know, one person says one thing, the other says another, or there's something omitted and the other one includes something. And that's where I wonder if there was some sort of third party, whether it's the selection or the ways and means committee who could offer. A more balanced take, but then say they come down. With a yes, because that, that I would find far more persuasive. If if there was something in the school board, someone who, well, then there was someone who. Was more of a third party, um, but knew the town, knew what was going on. I don't think I should speak to it, because I felt like that. Was missing in the end of debate.
And is it, will there be a new ways and means committee now that Ellen is the, so that?
There, there is, but not because she's blowing it up. She's, she's opened it up to anybody that wants to join again. She's not doing it. Um, out of, you know, getting rid of anybody in a vindictive manner. There were. Three or four that resigned from ways and means after last, at the, uh, you know, last month or so after election day. So there will be new members on the board. But there will be some that are returning as well. So there should be a balance there because this is one thing that that I've been. Um, adamant to to say is that. Their thing was that they they view, the reason those folks volunteers, they view, they view ways and means as rubber stamp for the school board. If we said we want unicorns for every kid. They felt that the ways and means would have approved that in the budget. So they came in with a bit of a different angle, a more analytical approach this year and and they certainly view themselves as not a rubber stamp for the district. And I think he saw that in some of their votes. Good or bad, but it was important for me to say. We have no say over who's on that ways and means. We don't want to say, we just want it to be. People that want to do the job and that are going to be fair about it. And Ellen has been, Ellen, we had a meeting with, or in our last meeting, Ellen was there and said, hey, we're all on the same page with this. So I think there was some concern that she was going to come on and get rid of everybody that voted against the school and have only, you know. First grade parents on the ways and means and that's, that's not the case at all. So there, there will be a mix of.
Yeah.
Opinions, people that support schools, people that. It's not that ways and means don't support schools, but people that, you know, come to it from a, you know, a larger angle that um, want to see change or something. So I think there'll be a, you know, there'll be a good mix next year. I'm hoping there's a good mix next year.
Question for you about the the ways and means that you're on that topic. Um. I noticed that they said in a lot of the meetings, they said that the school board didn't do enough to explore that, which in my opinion was kind of a cop-out and it's a blanket argument that's difficult to. You know, go against because did they give you any, any, any indication in their opinion, what would be exhaustive enough where they would be satisfied?
Yeah, to have essentially the plan that we had to have that same plan for three different options. That was basically their, their.
And that's not feasible.
But it wasn't feasible at the time with.
Yeah.
With the money to do that. Yeah, I mean, you know, this is stuff that's been going on for four and a half years, starting in two thousand nineteen. So what's that? Yeah, four and a half years. This is not a, you know, project we just threw together with a new school on a whim. I mean, there's four years worth of research on the. JFA website, which is now on the SEU website. You can find reports, you can find capital needs assessments that go back to twenty seventeen. That lay out twenty-year plans for all the, all the buildings in town, including South Heagan. So. It was not a fly-by-night um. Proposal that we did, so, but they just wanted to see more options like we had. We just, we just took a different approach with it, with the committee and with limited funding. So, but now we know that, hey, if that's, that's what folks want to see, then. It's going to cost money to do that, to get those plans laid out. And in the end, if we look at three different options and they're all within the same price and. You know, we go from there, so.
It's right, just to be clear, it's not within the same price.
Same price range, meaning that if we.
Produce the three different options, but the three different options can't be the same.
When we did this exercise back in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty timeframe, to do a brand-new elementary school was sixty-three million roughly. And then to do a severely renovated, where you gutted the whole thing, re-did all the mechanical systems, added the space that you need, it was like sixty million. So it was still. Um, they were comparable in price, which the estimates that we have had from La Valley Brenzing, or that's why the JFA committee recommended going with the new school and why the board agreed with that, because. Those costs were fairly similar. If we wanted to keep the same arrangements we had and strictly just fix the mechanical and plumbing systems. That price was less, but you weren't solving any space issues. You were just solving the natural age of building issues that you have.
But just so I'm super clear on next steps, you're going to go sort of back to the drawing board to come up with three different options.
It's, it's, but we don't, we don't know. All options are on the table at this point, so. We're moving into the annex in South Heagan. It's an option. Is it a great option? Probably not. Is it an option we'll choose as a board? I would say probably not, but we have, we're going with an open mind and have the conversations with South Heagan. Um, and then we're going to look at just keeping the arrangements the way they are. We're going to look at portables to add out back there. There's a portable in. Woodsville, somewhere in in the state that has a portable they got for COVID. They don't need it anymore. So we're looking at. Getting that, taking over their lease and just putting it out back to give us some extra space, to give us some office, office and conference space. So when. Parents are meeting with their, you know, with a team of teachers for their kid and their IEP, they're not sitting behind the stage doing it.
Ridiculous. Did you do the walk through the school?
I mean, I've been through the school. I mean, I think that's a great way to get people to vote for a bigger pool is by having meetings with parents and portable. Or putting it in the.
But, but we're looking at every option imaginable. I mean, any, anything possible, keeping the arrangements the way they are.
But it sounds like. There needs to be like a. A smaller budget option, like, like it's, it's just, it's conceivable that this town may never vote. For something as high.
This town's history has not been overly supportive of. Building buildings. They've done. Two major projects. They did the addition at AMS and Sally, you've probably speak to this more than I did. And then they did the South Heagan. Slash annex, two different projects, but all one campus. And other than that, that's pretty much all they've approved, I think. Eighty percent of building projects have failed in this town.
They built this school. We, I go back, wait for that forty-five years, so.
So they built this school in nineteen sixty-seven, opened it, and then next year they had to go back to taxpayers for a bond. To build a multipurpose cafeteria because they couldn't get it passed in the first go around. So literally one year later, they went back to taxpayers and asked for more money. We don't want to do that.
If you start to look at like, trying to get this passed, I think, part of your, those are them, right? To his point, there was not, if you look at like even just the budgets, there wasn't as low of headbutting at like the South Heagan level as there seemed to be in the Amherst district.
There was last year.
Was it last year?
Yeah, everything failed everywhere last year. I think Mont Vernon's budget passed, but everything else failed. We're under default for the second straight year. Our teacher contract failed last year. So it's, it's. Yeah, it's the way that.
And then does there ever come a point where from a regulatory issue, then the hand of Amherst is going to be forced? And by some type of code, they're going to say, you guys have to do these projects.
Or grandfathered in right now, um, with our special needs programming, which is driving some of our space issues. With the. Volume and the type of programming that we offer, having everything in-house, we're taking more space needs for that. So. In theory, we're one classroom away from having to put the music teacher on a cart and having them go classroom to classroom instead of having a music room. So if we have, you know, a family that comes with, with kids with some severe disabilities, just as an example, like triplets in first grade that. Are all physically disabled and have to have separate intervention space that's day-long. Band may go on a, on a cart and then, you know, they go room to room instead of having a, a music room, just as a, you know, a drastic example. Um, but you know, we're a, we're a big kindergarten class away from having to do that same thing. If we have. Fifty first graders that sign up for next year that aren't in kindergarten now, between people that move in and between people that had their kid in private kindergarten, we don't think it's going to happen. But if that happens and we have to add another first grade classroom. So we're at eight or nine next year, then we may have to take away that music room and put um, a first grade class in there, so. This building is at its max.
And and if they do the um. Move the like, you said seven to the eighth grade to the annex or some, does that just, that just kicks the can down the road, right? Because that's.
It just, it's a.
Because they're shell game. They're going to move in in three or four years. It's going to be the same problem only on that side now.
Yeah, I mean, that, that will. That'll help alleviate itself because you may have bigger sixth grades, but you may have a smaller ninth grade at that point. So, but what the problem is that you're putting all the kids in the high school. So you start to potentially restrict your high school programming unless you add more space in the high school. You have to have science labs. So maybe you have to redo those science labs. Maybe you have to add science labs in the high school. So that's, I don't know.
It's just not great having kids who are. Senior and junior in high school and a seventh grader.
Yeah. You have to build, you need a cafeteria.
Graders being in the middle school, but I am about seventh and eighth graders being, like, I, I started high school in seventh grade in the same. School, like, we were on different floors and it's a big discrepancy, but I've heard developmentally that. Fifth graders should be in elementary school for longer than they should be in.
Yeah, I mean, right, right now, the, the most up-to-date research on grade configuration, and there's not a lot. I've tried to dig into it. There's not a lot of grade configuration, but the most recent. Uh, report is from Columbia University is actually should build a K through eight.
Yeah, the longer, like, the longer they're in.
Is really the, they say that's the best. So that might be something we have to talk about. Good luck with getting that. You can't get.
But essentially, but the message of that is like, the longer you keep them stable in the same environment.
Yep.
The less disruption.
Yep.
Socially, psychologically, like, to help your for them. So to take a fifth grader and move them over is like. Seems very young. So anyway.
Yeah.
It doesn't, it, yeah, it's, it's really unfortunate because the plan would have brought the fifth graders back.
Correct. It would have solved space issues at the middle school if we did that. So we would have had an extra six classrooms open up, plus whatever intervention space that we use there.
Yeah.
We can start to space up those kids and down the road, we can start to fix stupid triangle classrooms and make them square and, you know, do that building slowly over time. Um, but that was the, the focus this year.
Yeah, I see your question as like the retiree. Um, so you mentioned, like, I know, like, a lot of people I know will be, they say they're concerned about taxes and they can't afford it, like people my age. And they'll, but they're going on vacations and they're buying new cars. I think they can. Are people your age legitimately concerned that they're going to be priced out where they can't actually afford to pay their property taxes? Is that, is that realistic?
Yes, no, obviously. Obviously, as the market has, you know, increased over the past, you know. Almost dozen years, their properties are worth more. But then, you know. Obviously, the taxes are a lot higher. They're not moving, they're staying there, they're not saying, I'm going to move. However, with the taxes going up and up, it is a consideration. A lot of people on fixed incomes. Um, retirement, I think.
Sure.
Yeah, well, so lucky. Do lots of vacations and recreational things as well, but um, not everybody's in that same boat.
I'm just curious, because it's difficult, like, I have. Money coming in every paycheck, because I'm just working, so it's not. Easy for somebody like me to relate to that as a concern. So I was kind of curious to hear.
Question I have, did I hear a correct statement, not hear from somebody that. The numbers of special ed kids have increased. Pretty dramatically over, let's say, the past ten, fifteen years. Um, and that goes back to the good school system. That's why people are moving to town. They've heard about our special ed program, but I did the tour of this school and those kids are in. Cubbies. As small as like behind the bookcase, there are four separate cubbies in there, all with a different special ed specialist. Teaching them different things. How can these children, you know? Focus. On what they're supposed to do. I mean, the space. I never realized until I did the tour of the school how, how critical the space was and, you know. The computer person is on a card and somebody else is in a closet. Um, the nurse's. Office is shrunk down to almost nothing with storage of goodness knows what else in her office.
We have a printer in the hallway.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's crazy.
But and I agree with you. But I think from a communication standpoint. I don't think I've ever been around a school where teachers don't want more. And there's always something there. And. I think there is a natural skepticism. Of when teachers say, we need this or whatever, but what really, do you, do you really need that? Um, you know, people are learning along. You know, chalkboards on their desk and like, do you really need these things? And. I do think that there was a, a video tour of the deeper teachers pointing out some space issues. And I did. And certainly there was a video for me and I, but I made. Logical leap of what they're sharing to. This is a lot of kids crammed into one space where it affects the learning. And I wonder. There was an effort to focus it more on the children. And I know that, you know, recording and things like that is hard, but. Even if it was models of like, this is what a classroom here looks like with twenty-five kids. This is what one disruptive child does. That to me is far more motivating, because it'd be like, oh, the facility department is nice. I, I was in. Some crappy school that had extraordinary teachers, they didn't lack space and I got a great education. Um, but I'll say that I was in a school that lacked their space. Actually, the facilities were nicer, but it was a. School scores were lower, so in part because one disrupted child, slowed learning at thirty-five others. And so. I do feel like if there was maybe more of an emphasis on. The impact to the children and that this isn't teachers asking for more. Rather. The parents and, and we know the children asking on behalf of them. That would certainly uh, find its way. I also. My son has, has fairly severe special needs. And I do know that. You know. There are a group of people who. Whether it's because they, they're struggling with what we are, or they know somebody. Who have a strong. Simple fear sympathy for that situation or playing the issue down. And I also think that maybe in the communication. Breaking it down a little more simply around. Bolts, because I think about the things I've read and their, their desk. Like, are there bullets that we could buy? Like, if I care about this, here's what it is. So. For instance, like the cafeteria gym has one wall and floor, like, there are people who care about sports, on case playing games. Those may be very different than the people who care about special needs, because if you're a parent of special needs kids, who cares if there's a nice basketball court, like. I'm more worried about does my, is my child in a cubby? But if there was a way to be like, oh, here's a special needs section, here's. And I can ignore the part about the basketball court. Um, but the kid, but the parents who want their kids to have those sports during, all right, basketball court, here's the issue. I think images around like, here's the impact of the children. I think those things, essentially flipping that sign upside down. I was actually sort of offended. I was like, really, this is it? This is. Staff, school, students, like, this is not, this is, you're missing the mission. And I think as long as it feels like. Real or not, right? And that, and that is not, I don't, again, I don't want this going, but. The teachers unions have been, I think, made some bad mistakes and then are ripped apart and I think are really at the bottom. I think there's just a view for many who are certainly on the right, but I think. Independence as well. There's a distrust there and I think centering it more on the students and giving those visuals, people will respond more. Um. And maybe even parents, you know, it's, it's, I know you're realistic to, to children who don't want to feel like you're, you're. Uh, taking advantage of kids, but maybe parents. Uh, taking advantage of kids, but maybe parents pointing out, my son and my daughter goes. To school in this room, and these will be impacts. Um. There's, you know, the. My son or daughter fell on this lino and floor and really hurt themselves. We want a wooden, you know, we feel like there's a need for a wooden floor. Um, I feel like that personally. Again, I'm someone who. Leads to to guess. But even that would be more impactful than seeing the teacher saying a lot of something. So I just run back to the school board, uh, school, uh, sorry, the town meetings when I do. The teachers will always know the newest projectors and this or that, and it's not necessarily that it's. Longly stated, but but figuring out the need from the wall.
The only thing that, like, I I totally agree with you that students need to be front and center, but it seems pretty clear to me that a lot of the argument was like, there have been fires in this building, there have been floods. There's like. Very poor air quality, kids are vulnerable in portables from like. A safe shooting safety perspective to anything else. So like, I feel like those were like. So when you talk about kids like safety and wellbeing, like, I feel like that was pretty front and center. So was that not compelling enough? Or, because to me, none of it came across as like, we want something fancy and new. It's like our kids are like not in a safe. Healthy environment, or was that not, is that not compelling?
I I think it can be, Brad, if you go in. With a lot of ske- with skepticism or a healthy dose of skepticism, I think you could read that pretty easily as. Scare tactics, because are really that dangerous? I don't think so. Like, portables don't seem that bad. And.
But you can shoot through the wall of a portable.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop the recording here, just not enough for this conversation, it's timing. No, it's, I have to leave, I have to go pick up my daughters, but Jason. I'll be here.